Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this, the overview and scrutiny committee of Gravesham Borough Council. Just before we go on to the main agenda, I'll read the opening live streaming guidance. So I intend now to go through some housekeeping matters. This meeting has been livestreamed via YouTube and recorded. The recording will be uploaded to YouTube within two working days where it can be accessed by anyone. Members, please use the microphones in front of you when talking and ensure that you turn off your microphone once you've finished speaking. Another member or officer will not be able to speak if your microphone is still on. Please note that the council's visual equipment may on some occasions focus on or near the public gallery. Therefore, those in attendance at this meeting may be filmed or recorded. Attendance at this meeting signifies that you agree to this. If as a member of the public, you do not wish to be filmed or recorded, please inform the council staff in attendance. And we will try and assist where reasonably possible. On hearing the fire alarm, we will ask all attendees to immediately evacuate the building. Please evacuate via the nearest fire exits and make your way to Community Square outside the main reception doors. That takes us very promptly then on to item two, which is apologies for absence. And I don't believe we have any apologies for this evening. Which then takes us on to item three of tonight's agenda, which is to sign the minutes of the previous meeting. Then being the minutes from the sixth of March twenty twenty five. Are all members happy for me to sign those as correct? Thank you. That takes us then on to item four, which is to declare any interests which members may have on the items contained in this agenda. When declaring an interest, members must state what their interest is. Do we have any interests this evening? No, that's no interests. That then takes us on to item five, which is to consider any other terms in part A, which will be considered in private or any items in part B in public, of which there are none. Which then takes us on to item six, which is the scrutiny topic reviews draft terms of reference. And just on that item, I'll give a very brief introduction by saying that the constitution allows for the overview and scrutiny committee to undertake topic reviews. As and when we see that there are areas of the council's work that requires scrutiny. And that's section ten of the procedural guidance rules of the council, if anyone wants to reference that. And what we're proposing to do tonight is to look at two areas of topic reviews. One covering planning, one covering homelessness. And have a general debate on the draft terms of reference that you have before you this evening. And potentially agree some names to go on that document and then potentially to delegate myself and Lee to finalize the arrangements for those two groups to meet. And I'll just hand over to Chloe just on how we envision these groups going forward.
Thank you, Chair. And so, once we agree the subgroup membership this evening, I'll then look to email those members of the subgroups and the lead officers to arrange initial meeting date. And then we can produce a work plan.
Thank you very much, Chloe. And one conversation that we've just had is about how we're going to make these groups work practically for members in understanding that members do have commitments with work outside of these meetings. And what we've suggested is that five thirty might work as a potential meeting time where we need to have additional meetings called for the subgroups. It's really just to see if that would be helpful to members as a potential way forward. Yep, getting nods, so we'll try and work on that basis where we can. And so what we'll then do is we'll head over to the reports that we have before us. And if we start with the homelessness topic review, if I could potentially hand over to the officers at this stage to introduce the draft terms of reference, please.
Thank you, councillor Mead. Okay, so I've reviewed the terms of reference. And the first item that we've got on the terms of reference in two point four one is the council's approach to managing homelessness. Including the strategy and how that aligns with the statutory duties placed on the council. With regards to the next item on the list in relation to prevention tools that are used and the success rate of those tools and how we compare to other local authorities. In terms of, in terms of kind of the data around that, it is important to note that there are strict guidelines on how we report information and how we report outcomes. So we can carry out exercises in terms of benchmarking against other local authorities. However, as I say, outcomes that are recorded are very strict in that sense. Wraparound support with regards to households and those that are likely to experience homelessness and measures that are applied to vulnerable groups. How key, how key parties are included in the voluntary sector and interact with service and delivery with regards to the service. We'll cover an agreement with regards to how the service is funded. And the current position and how that was impacted by COVID nineteen. It is important to note that the information that the council collates and reports has changed over time. And that includes both in terms of internal systems and also legal requirements with regards to the introduction of the Homelessness Reduction Act twenty nineteen. So again, there will be limitations in terms of the data that's available. The number of approaches that the local authority receive each year. No problem with that. Reasons for homelessness, that's a statute requirement, so again, we have data available on that. Percentage of approaches that result in temporary accommodation being provided. Yep, no problem with that data. Average length of stay in temporary accommodation. It won't be a problem, however, as I say, as I previously mentioned, we have had a change in system. And so therefore, depending on the timeframe that we're looking for, there may be limitations in terms of what can be provided. Where temporary accommodation is provided as a result of a household being identified as in priority and need. Broken down into household type. So again, there is very strict guidelines in terms of the information that is reported. And so we would need to agree the specific requirements with regards to what household type equates to, whether that's bedroom need or property type and so on. And so again, it is limited in terms of the information that we provide on a quarterly basis on that, on that front. Average length of stay per household type. How accommodation is procured and provided, including checks that are carried out. A problem, that's a legal obligation for us as a local authority to make sure that obviously we provide suitable accommodation and do due diligence on that. And how the service is funded and rent is recovered. A problem, we have systems set up for that. And so we can provide data around that. So in terms of finalizing the kind of terms of reference. And I guess we'll need to, as I say, clarify a couple of the points that are there to make sure that that the information that we can provide is deliverable. And that aligns with, is what aligns with what's being requested. Welcome, any questions?
Thank you very much for that. And I should have explained to members who are new to the topic review process that the whole purpose of topic reviews is to be a critical friend to try and improve service outcomes. And what we will do at the end of the topic review is basically write up a report. That report will come back to the whole scrutiny committee for us to then vote upon. And then, subject to the ratification of the scrutiny committee, that report is then submitted to the cabinet, who can then decide whether or not to take forward those recommendations as part of their work in improving service delivery within the borough. So that's the context in which we're working, a really helpful introduction. I'm very happy to open the floor at that stage to members. Because ultimately, it's for us to decide as a committee tonight how we want to shape this review moving forward. Thank you, councillor Croxton.
Yes, I very much welcome this topic review. And I'm just interested insofar as, I understand the difficulty of providing certain information, I understand that. I just wondered whether we would be able to be in contact with other organisations that help and support the homeless. And I'd be very interested in those sort of charity organisations. And what their feelings and their inputs would be into how we could improve our possible services.
Yeah, most definitely, we can reach out to other organisations that support vulnerable individuals. It is important to note that obviously we try to, as a service, provide a wraparound service where we engage partners and voluntary organisations and charities in order to make sure that we're providing that wraparound service. But yeah, not a problem in terms of kind of reaching out and trying to get information around the number of individuals that they may be working with, the kind of success rates. So if we're clear on kind of what data we would like to collect, by all means, we can, we can, we can do some benchmarking on that.
I think that'll be very helpful. Yes, I think there are so many organisations out there that I think we can learn something from. And what would be interesting to see what advice they could offer us, because all of us, or not me, but you guys are working, if you like, of chalk face, experiencing this problem firsthand. I just wonder whether part of the terms of reference could be, something could be added in that says to also, you know, discuss with other organisations in similar field to work.
Thank you, councillor Crockston. So what I would like to do is just obviously make it clear that with regards to the service that we provide, we've got very strict statutory guidelines in terms of the households that we can help or that we have a duty towards. But it is important to note that our duties can extend beyond that, as you say, by working with other organisations, including charities, to try to achieve a successful outcome. And so we can definitely include information with regards to other organisations and the help that's available through those charities and through those organisations. As I say, to, to kind of deliver information on the number of individuals that they work with and the kind of outcomes that they achieve.
So thank you, councillor Croxton. I think that's a really good point, actually, for both topic review groups, that we aren't constantly insular in looking at what we're doing ourselves all the time. And actually looking at how others feel towards us as a council, but also how other services could even make some sensible recommendations potentially for us improving our service delivery. And the best scrutiny reviews that we've done in the past have been those where we've had that balance of internal reflectiveness, but also getting out there on the ground in the community. Whilst the overview and scrutiny committee and its subgroups does not have the power to compel any external organisation to appear before it or its subgroups, what we do have is that ability within the constitutional framework to invite those groups in to contribute. And I can certainly tell you from previous experience where we have invited other groups, they've been very forthcoming in wanting to work with us. I've got councillor Hills and then councillor Larkins.
Chairman, first of all, I'd like to say that I think there are two very interesting and worthwhile topics for review, I must say that. And having read the reports, I couldn't think of anything to ask at tonight's meeting. I couldn't, I felt that most of the relevant points have been covered in the terms of reference without branching into the review itself. Which is always tempting at this stage at times. And I took it as read that we are free to reach out to other groups. As you say, we can't compel them to get involved, but if we were unable to do that, if we're unable to invite them, I don't think the review would be worthwhile. And I'm not sure I'd want to be involved personally if we were constrained in that kind of way. So although the point is important and relevant, I took that as something that would be assumed anyway. And as I say, if we couldn't do that, then it wouldn't be worthwhile having the review because we would be unaware of so many activities within the field of homelessness. I'm sure we won't cover every aspect, but as I read the report, I thought it left us free to invite whoever we felt something like to do. So congratulations to those, in my view anyway, who made the report, who couched the terms of reference. I think they are relevant points. I think it leaves us pretty open field to be free to do as we like and ask who we like to this meeting and hopefully a good outcome.
Thank you, Chair. And I just wanted to reflect a little bit, there's a couple of sections in this report where we talk about how the service is funded. I'm conscious we've got statutory duty, but I think we've spoken at full council, F and A and other things around, I guess, the the financial burden that this topic has placed on the council over the last two years, if not sort of previous to that. I just wondered if, given that the value we're spending on this has dropped, whether it would be possible to actually scrutinise and understand the effectiveness of those strategies that you've put in place to actually reduce the burden or the cost burden on Gravesham. So you had done quite a few things, but obviously here we're talking about today's world. But actually, there's strategies that you're probably deploying today that have been deployed over the last couple of years and maintain going forward. I think it'd be quite good to understand how effective those strategies have been and that continue to be.
Thank you, councillor Larkins. So we will be bringing a report with regards to, like you said, the approach that we're taking as a local authority to, to bring down some of that financial burden that the council's general fund is facing. So we've got a huge amount of work that's ongoing at the moment with regards to driving down the overall cost of temporary accommodation. And a progress update with regards to that will be provided in due course. The council's aim with regards to that piece of work is to reach cost neutrality in relation to temporary accommodation by the next financial year. So it's a huge piece of work and it's a huge undertaking in terms of the kind of area of work that we're undertaking with regards to reducing the spending in that area. Because as most people will be aware, the kind of biggest financial pressure for most local authorities across the UK is the cost of temporary accommodation and, and the kind of the subsidy losses that we suffer as a local authority with regards to households that need to go into temporary accommodation and the costs that we pick up as a local authority as a result of that. And so, yes, we are making headway in terms of, in terms of that area of work. And a report will be provided in due course to provide an update on that.
Hey, do we have any other questions on the homelessness review, councillor Hills?
Just one small point, I was once involved in a topic review, access to health services. And at the end of it, we produced a pretty comprehensive report. And there were a number of organisations who were anxious to gain access to that report. I do know that primarily because I used to be a governor of Darren's Hospital. And I just wondered what the position was regarding how, at the end of this, whether we'll be producing comprehensive reports? And to what extent would that be disseminated?
Thank you, councillor Hills. So it's fully my intention that all reports will come back to the overview and scrutiny committee as comprehensive reports, fully transparently. And that they will then be published as part of the next or subsequent cabinet agenda. Again, given another opportunity for it to go into the public domain. And then, once the cabinets have had their debate, the scrutiny meeting that follows that cabinet meeting, we will then reflect on the cabinet's comments to the reports. And I hope that way, with three meetings, we will be able to make sure that the reports are disseminated as far and wide as possible. If members are happy with what we've just heard on the homelessness review, I'd like to make three separate proposals at this stage. The first proposal that I'd like to make to the committee is that councillor Croxton is elected as the chairman of that sub-review group. The second is that we accept the draft terms of reference that we have before us. And the third is that permission of the overview and scrutiny committee is delegated to councillor Croxton and myself to finalize the, the member appointments to that panel group. Can I have a show of hands that that's all? Yep, so that's unanimous, so thank you very much for that. And with that, we'll move on to a second topic review, which is planning. And Tom, if you could introduce that one, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And so to provide a brief introduction, the meeting of the overview and scrutiny committee on the sixth of July twenty three, members suggested future scrutiny topic reviews. This included the following topic, engagement with planning services. Councilors were contacted frequently regarding planning applications and a review would look into the engagement with planning issues. As director for the planning service, I welcome this opportunity. This topic review is an opportunity to continue to improve the council's planning services, while also ensuring members can carry out their duties and serve the residents of the borough effectively in respect to planning matters. The terms of reference in front of you today have been developed in consultation with the Chair and proposed three key areas for the subgroup to focus on. Review the council's current approach to equipping members with the information and training required to engage effectively with the public on planning matters and discharge their duties under the constitution. Suggested areas of consideration here include training, interaction with legal services. Suggested areas of consideration here include training, interaction with legal services and consideration the role of councillors in balancing community representation alongside other duties. Review the council's current approach to member engagement with the planning service and key stakeholders. Suggested considerations here are how members engage with the planning department and engagement with wider stakeholders, including parishes. Review the council's current planning protocols outlined in the council's constitution. And again, suggested considerations here are reviewing current protocols as outlined in the constitution. And also reference to the effectiveness of recent changes to the constitution. And also consideration of government's proposals around planning committees. The timeline for the study, six month. I, I think this is quite tight, given the content or content that we are looking to explore here. We can of course provide regular updates to this committee on progress and timelines should that need to adjust. In terms of lead officer, I'm happy to assume that role. With members of the planning team joining as appropriate. And I think it's fair to say in the dialogue that we've had, certainly with you Chair, this study focuses on the topic review outlined and it may be the committee wishes to explore other aspects of the planning service in future topic reviews. And tonight, as outlined, the ambition is for the committee to agree to the terms of reference and the subgroup and look forward to engaging with the subgroup on this in due course and happy to take any questions. Thank you.
So thank you very much, Tom. And I think that that point you mentioned about the timeframes is really important because it is going to be a heavy review, but one that we'll certainly try and aim to deliver within the six months. But again, the constitution does allow for both groups to extend, if we feel it's worthwhile, to, to extend those reviews. Again, the floor is open at this stage. Any questions or comments from members? Thank you. I'll go to councillor Tandy, then councillor Larkins.
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to, you know, give the opinion that this is a very much needed review. Planning is such a contentious topic. And so in, to ensure that we are being effective in our leadership, this is something that definitely needs to happen. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you. Sorry, I apologise if we have been provided this already. In two point four point one point two, it was about government proposals for member training. I mean, I know we talked about member training before, maybe it's a side of topic, but have we all seen what the government proposals for member training actually are? I, I don't believe I've seen that. Sorry.
So within the paper, there is a link to the proposed changes to member training. Ultimately, it's around whether that becomes mandatory for members of the planning committee. More than happy councillor Larkins to send that to you outside of this meeting as well for information.
Thank you very much councillor Croxton.
Yes, just a quick point of comment. As the Chair of Planning Committee, I would not expect to be in any way involved unless I was asked for my opinions as Chair. I'd be happy to supply them, but I do think it is a very, very worthwhile review. I think it could provide us with a lot of insight and a firm direction forward. So many thanks.
Thank you very much. And, and just like we said on the, the other topic review, there's no reason why we can't again go out, look at how other councils conduct their, their member engagements around planning. But also look at some of the organisations that are involved in the planning process and potentially speak to some of them as well. So not seeing, oh sorry councillor Hills.
Thank you Chairman. Yes, I just wanted to make a brief comment because my earlier comments apply equally to this review as well, really. It's very worthwhile. I agree with councillor Tandy. But I think it's also worthwhile remembering that in reading this report, we're looking primarily at the role of members, as I understand it. And I don't think any of us are professing to be planning experts. And even members who have read and tried and learned and tried to understand about planning can see that it's not an exact science. It's there are conflicting elements even within the national planning policy framework. So I think it's important that we do concentrate on the role of members to a large extent and especially on the aspect of predetermination. A lot of members, when they're invited to see a resident, to listen to their objections to a particular planning application, may be unsure about predetermination. And a lot of residents sometimes assume that because they've had a word with their local councillor, that he would readily agree and with their point of view and not the, not perhaps the applicant's. So if there's a greater understanding in, in just that as one example, I think that would be a good thing.
Yes, thank you councillor Hills. I completely agree with the, the points that you raised. Councillor Larkins?
Thank you. Yeah, sorry, just coming back on the training point. I think, yeah, I've read the link, the link is, if I'm on, if I'm reading it right, was, as I read it, was just for mandatory training and certification for planning committee members. And I think, I, I guess it could have been two point four point one point four about councillors, maybe following from councillor Hills's point. I think for those of us who aren't on the planning committee, I think we, we get sort of training. I just wondered if, obviously the government haven't made any proposals for like, if you're a regular councillor who's not on the planning committee, but still are engaging with the community and you have the sort of rights and responsibilities. So I just sort of wondered, there's no mandatory or potential mandatory framework for training for, for that, is there?
For you Chair. So I think this is an opportunity, this review, to look at training for members, not simply planning committee members as well. And to see how that can be best provided and the information that would be helpful to you. So I think as part of your review or this review, we, we can look at that. And also in that first meeting that we've mentioned, I'm more than happy to cover in more detail the current consultation process that the government have. But I think in general point, there is an opportunity and written into the terms of reference to look at training. And that might be equally looking at how other councils offer that training as well.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? And I'd like to make the three similar proposals to the last review. Firstly, that I is Chair this sub-review group. That we agree to the draft terms of references outlined in the report pack. And that delegated authority is given to myself and councillor Croxton to finalise the member participants of that subgroup. Again, can I have a show of hands that we're all content with that? That's perfectly unanimous again. So thank you very much and very much look forward to getting these reviews off the ground because as members have quite rightly said, both very worthwhile reviews that I think will have positive outcomes for our services here in Gravesham. That then takes us on to item seven, which is call-ins of which there are none. Under item eight, which is any other reason by special circumstance the Chair is of the opinion should be considered as a matter of urgency. I just wanted to very briefly update the committee. You may have all seen that notice was recently given by the leader that he would be making an executive decision to enter into a pre-service construction agreement regarding the Cascades Leisure Centre. Just out of courtesy, I wanted to really inform the committee that I had been fully consulted on those proposals. And that I had subsequently met with the section one five one officer to go over the finances. The deputy chief executive officer, the head of inclusive growth and the interim UK Shared Prosperity Fund Programme Manager to go through the decision in line by line detail. In weighing up the significance of the decision against the urgency of the decision notice and in consultation with the vice chairman of the committee, I determined that it would be counterproductive at that stage and potentially costly to the council to make a call in. But I, I want to stress that given the significance of the decision, that I, I wanted the committee to know that scrutiny had taken place in those meetings that I had with, with officers. And to give the committee tonight the reassurance that at the appropriate juncture, and I'm working that out with senior officers at the moment, that there would be a chance for this committee to scrutinise properly the arrangements around the, the future of the Cascades Leisure Centre. So I'm sorry that it wasn't listed on the agenda, but I just thought, given the, the scale of the Cascades project and how I think across the political divide is something that we all want to, to see go forward. It's important that tonight it was referenced that those meetings had taken place. So with that said, sorry councillor Hills.
Just quickly if I may, before you close the meeting Chairman. We've mentioned a timescale of six months for these reviews. I assume that's from the start of the review. And I'm simply asking us to bear in mind that we're coming up to the holiday period. Not much goes on politically in, or review wise in, in August. So I'm just asking the committee to bear that one in mind and whenever we begin, then it's six months. Henceforth that we're talking about.
Yes, thank you councillor Hills. That, that's certainly my intention and how, how we're going to move those reviews forward from, from today is that Lee and I will use that delegated authority to determine the makeup of those groups. And then Lee and I will have an initial meeting with the, the heads of those services to work out a work plan, which we will then publish to members. Because I, I agree that forward planning just from a work and external perspective is really important with this. So what I'd like to see is dates in the diary, so that we're not one wondering week on week whether or not we've got a scrutiny review meeting. And I, I hope that will be helpful to the officers as well with, in terms of managing the workload over the six months of the review. Okay, if that then takes us on to item nine, which is private items to move if required pursuant to section one hundred A four of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy two, that the public be excluded from any items included in part B. We don't have any items in part B, which takes us on to item ten, which is call-ins of which there are none. So at eight minutes past eight, I declare the meeting closed and thank all members and officers for attending this evening. Thank you.